To help you. I need to help you, I will.
Good evening. Calling the Columbia County Board of Commissioners Public Hearing on the Millage Rate to Order. That we have a full quorum. Commissioners, have you seen the minutes from the previous meeting? And if you have any questions, otherwise we'll accept a motion to approve them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting as presented.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Going to go straight to the public hearing and I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just give you a quick overview of where we are with the millage rate. This is the third public hearing that we had regarding the millage rate. Just as a, in the way of a reminder, we are dealing with really the M and O millage rate, which is our general fund millage rate. We also have debt service and bonds and fire, which I'll talk about briefly. But the big millage rate, the big number, is the M and O digest. Currently Columbia County has a millage rate of 5.147 mils. As we were preparing our budget, and as you know, the budget preparation happens before the digest comes out, so we have to make some assumptions. But we actually prepared our budget with a tax reduction. So instead of going with 5.147 mils, we prepared our budget with a 4.999 millage rate, and we anticipated a growth of 5% in the digest. When we did that and balanced our budget, you approved the budget, and then a couple of short months later, we actually get the actual digest back. And instead of a 5% growth in the digest, we saw a 13.96% growth in the digest. So we were able to propose a millage rate that was even more of a rollback. So instead of 4.999, staff was recommending that we roll our millage rate back to 4.895. The bond also with the growth in the digest, we were able to roll that millage rate back as well. The fire millage rate, we did leave exactly where it was last year. That was able to balance the fire budget. But I am proud to report that with the millage rate of 2.78 mils, 2.788 mils, the fire department is now fully funded with that fire. So that millage rate is dedicated to the fire department. It's not used by anything else in the county. So we are looking and proposing a millage rate of 4.895. We did do a quick little calculation because I think there was an item that came up in at least the last meeting and probably the meeting before that, where we were looking at this year, the governor and the legislature are actually giving taxpayers an additional homestead exemption. So instead of the $2,000 for a homestead exemption, our taxpayers are going to get an additional $18,000 off of their assessed value. So that is going to be a help this year on taxes. And we did a quick little comparison and analysis, and if you have that, if you want to throw that up for me, just to kind of give you this quick little analysis that we have here. So the average value of a house in Columbia County in 2022 was $360,000. The taxable value on that home is 40%. So you're taxed at 40% of your value. So in this case, you'd be taxed on $144,000. You take that exemption of $2,000 off, so your total assessment in 2022 would be $142,000 of value. Remember, I said the millage rate was 5.147. So on a $360,000 home in 2022, you would have paid $730.87, okay? Now, this is just for M and O, for the county. This is not school taxes, it's not any additional taxes. This is for the county's portion, which is the only thing we have control over, is the county's portion. So we did look at the valuations in 2023, the next column you see there, and we took the average increase in value, which was 11.6% across the board. So that 11.6% means that the new value of that $360,000 home in 2023 would be 401,000, meaning the taxable amount will be 167,04. But with the governor and legislature's exemptions of $20,000, you'd be paying, again, taxes on 140 instead of 142. At the same millage rate, if you'd have left the millage rate exactly where it was, the taxpayer would have seen a decrease of $6 just based on that homestead exemption. But the commission thought it was prudent, and the staff thought it was prudent to be able to go back even further. So instead of leaving the millage rate where it was, we did propose a full quarter mil rollback of the millage rate to be able to save taxpayers additional money. So in this case, you see the proposed rate on the very far right column. So a house that is now worth $401,000 on the assessed value. And again, this is the assessed value. I don't think anybody's going to sell their house for what the county has it assessed at. I'm certainly not going to sell mine for what the county has it assessed at. But the assessed value in this case is the 401, the taxable amount, again, being 160. The $20,000 this year exemption takes you to that 147,04. And you can see the bottom line there, that taxpayer that had that value home would pay $688.75 to the county on their portion of taxes, which is significantly less than the $730 that they paid last year. I say significantly less. When you start adding these up and you start looking at higher value homes, the math stays consistent throughout the assessment. So it could be big savings for our taxpayers. But I think at the end of the day, this board has made it clear that every dollar counts for the taxpayer, which is why we are proposing a full quarter mil rollback to 4.895 instead of the 4.999 that we presented at budget time. But with that, I'll pause for questions or comments, and if you have any other, anything else, I'd be glad to answer that.
Are we expecting the state to give us another $18,000 exemption next year?
So that's tough to say. You know, they passed that in this legislative session. The governor actually signed it into a law in March. The state has a large surplus of money right now. They have over a billion dollars in surplus. We don't know. But I think that it would be prudent for us to, you know, again, we're doing a full quarter mil rollback, but if we don't get that exemption next year, we need to look at another rollback to be able to help the taxpayer make up that difference if they don't get that. Which is one of the reasons why we didn't want to leave it at the 5.147. It wasn't a significant enough decrease to the taxpayer.
What point will we pay the debt off? Because, of course, I would like to accelerate that. Way some of the bonds are, we're not allowed to.
So we are accelerating our debt to the extent that we can now. Everything that we can pay early, we are paying early. We do have bonds that are callable. Some of those are several years out. Ms. Reese is here. I don't know if you have any specifics on that. We can get you those. But some of those are out another 10 or 12 years before they're actual, before they're callable. Anytime we can accelerate debt payment, we accelerate debt payment. We are aggressively taking our debt down. And by the way, if you look at our debt capacity, we're at a fraction of what the law would allow us to borrow as a county. We're at a very small fraction of that, and whittling that down, not adding to that debt. We're not adding any additional debt, any new debt.
And my preference would be...
I understand. And that's where we're headed. We're trying to get there.
But the debt millage is going down as well.
Yes, sir. The debt millage is also going down.
Are you of the debt going down?
So the total debt millage last year was .616, and this year is .559. So it is down .124 mils. We calculate that number just on the amount of money that is needed to pay the debt. We're not allowed to charge any additional millage rate outside of the amount of money we need to be able to pay our debt service for that year.
Taxpayer voted for that to be a full mil.
That's correct. That was a, that was a full mil. So on the 17 bond, the taxpayer actually pay, actually voted for a one mil increase, and we've been able to whittle that down every year. So instead of paying one mil for the entire term of the life of that bond, that one mil is now down to .362. So it's gone down two-thirds already since 2017.
Questions? Well, I actually don't see it on here, but I'm going to add it to the agenda on the fly. Any public comments by here to speak to the millage rate? Oh, a couple. Come on down. I'm sorry, you can't speak? You have shorts on?
Bob, we're 7:31. Now, I just commend the board on being able to reduce the millage rate. I'm seeing next door and Facebook posts with a lot of hateful information about how you guys are raising everything and incurring a lot of extra costs and lining your pockets, et cetera. I just don't think it's well-publicized that you're actually lowering the millage rate instead of raising it, which seems to be the common belief. That's all. Just wanted to congratulate you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Hold on a second, wait. Come on down if you want to speak, if you will just come down. We need to know who you are.
It's okay. Come on down, come on down.
Oh, come on. Connie hadn't bitten anybody in like two months. Could you just state your name and address to the record, please, ma'am?
My address, too?
It's okay.
Mary Schuster, 211 Ryan Lane, Evans, Georgia, 89.
Thank you.
I like to look at numbers, and I'm looking at what you have here, and you do have a reduction from 2022. But on a $400,000 home, I'm figuring the homeowner with a $400,000 home is saving $42 over a year in taxes. I don't see that that's very much.
Well, you know, it costs to live in the number one place in America with the sheriff, with the fires, with the whole.
I understand that, but $42 won't even buy groceries for a week or pay for daycare. So, I mean, it's really not a whole lot on a $400,000 home.
You're right. My perspective is it's not a lot of money to be paying in taxes on a $400,000 home.
All right.
Ma'am? Please, come on.
I'm Betty, I'm sorry, Betty Cerency, and you need an address?
Please.
604 Kavanaugh Way, and that's Evans 30809. I just had a question. The budget that you've proposed, does that include the Board of Elections' budget?
Yes, does it not?
That does include. So the proposed, I was there today, and they proposed an expenditure of roughly $274,000 for additional six tabulators, 25 BMDs, and then secure paper and ink. And that's included in the budget that you're proposing for next year, is that right? Okay.
The budget's already been approved. So we're not proposing a budget now. The budget was approved in July, so the budget is already in effect. We're just talking about millage rate tonight. But the budget has already been approved.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, it included those items.
What's a BMD?
That's where you put your vote in.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will move straight into the commission meeting. I am calling the Columbia County Board of Commissioners August 15, 2023 Meeting to Order. I'm going to ask Commissioner Couch if she'd open us with invocation.
Please bow your heads. Your holy Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for this time together to conduct the county's business. Your Lord, we ask that you would please protect those who protect us. Please bless those who are here tonight and their families. Be with us now as we make these decisions and help us to do all things in your will. In your most holy and precious name, I pray. Amen.
Ma'am, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, nation, God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
The records show we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the August 1 meeting in your packet. Have no changes, I'll accept a motion to approve as written.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. There's no special recognition, but I think I noticed a Boy Scout or so. Is there a Boy Scout here? Yeah, okay. Why don't you stand up and tell us your name and where you go to school? Welcome. A merit badge or a, what is it, a super? All right, everybody be polite, there's a Boy Scout here. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. It's been through the necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda, so if it still meets with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Questions? Comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion carries. On to the debate. And I believe the first item goes back to the millage rate. Any other comments, Scott, that you want to make or...
I believe it's, I believe there may be, and I'll need to go back and look at this resolution. I know that the Board of Education voted to lower their millage rate, and I'm not 100% sure that this resolution reflects that new rate. It does. 7.2, 17.2 mils? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that that was the correct number, so I don't have anything additional, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, comments, or thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-39 as presented and authorize the chairman to sign all required forms and documents.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion carries. Mr. Merlier, I believe you have the next motion.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Gary Richardson with a term ending December 31, 2024, Connie Malir with a term ending December 31, 2026, and Scott Johnson and Andy Finch with a term ending August 16, 2026 to the Columbia County Public Facilities Authority.
Second.
This is, the Public Facilities Authority is a new authority that was created by the legislature last year, giving the county the opportunity to be able to issue revenue bonds. This is, this would not be general obligation bonds that you were talking about earlier, incurring debt, but instead revenue bonds, where if we wanted to prepay for SPOLOX projects or something like that, we could use some of that SPOLOX money that's already coming in to be able to fund some of those projects. A lot of the projects we're seeing now, the budgets are being busted just because of inflation, and if we can take advantage of potentially doing some of those projects early, we may be able to save some money. Also, we're in a rate scenario right now, for the first time in my career and a lot of people's career, where Columbia County has such a good bond rating, we can borrow money less than 3%, but the money that we have in the bank, we can earn over 5%. So there may be a scenario where we may want to put our SPOLOX money in the bank earning 5% and borrow money at less than 3% and pay that back. And then, of course, the additional money that the county would get on that would have to go to the projects. You can't take that money out of that and spend it any other way, but it would give us enough money to be able to cover some of these additional projects and some of the needs of the things the voters have already voted on. This Public Facilities Authority that you're putting together would have the ability to look at those projects individually and then decide if one of those scenarios would be beneficial to the county or not.
And our cities are able to take advantage of the authority as well, right?
Yeah, both cities and the Board of Education. So once the authority is in place, we actually have been approached by one of the cities already who is looking to do a similar scenario because of the rate situation we're in now. So yes, both cities and the Board of Education will be able to use this authority as well.
Questions? There's a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion carries. Commissioner Richardson.
Make a motion to approve Johnny Johnson to 90 days to vacate following the closing of the property.
Second.
I'm going to take that, I can. So during the negotiations for that, for the option that was passed on 6 June 2023, during the negotiations, it was agreed that Mr. Johnson would have 90 days to vacate upon the sale of the property. The agreement was not annotated in the action that was passed. So the owner is coming back and asking that the option be amended to give him the 90 days upon the closing of the property.
Questions about that? Motion, second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. No legal matters?
No legal matters.
No requests for review by committee?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Priscilla Benz?
My name is Priscilla Benz, 4215 Dunwoodie Road, Martinis. And I'm here to talk about the LGBTQ+ books that are in the children, youth, and young adult sections of the Columbia County Library. The young adult section is now called Teen Fiction, but it's down there in that same room on the ground floor. About 16 months ago, some of us began to challenge books in the children's section. These books had all been recommended by the Rainbow Coalition of the American Library Association. All of these books promote and glamorize the LGBTQ+ lifestyle, even though sometimes it's subtle. Like I read a children's book this week that was just, the back flap was talking about the authors, and one of them is binary queer. So it's actually propaganda to the parent. The book itself seemed to be okay. It was, had a couple strange words. Up to this point, we have challenged books that have easy access to minors, and about 20 that I'm aware of, only one of those was removed. The challenging process has not worked well. In the two meetings in which I challenged books, the library board seemed to vote in unison with Ms. Mayner, the library manager, who would have been the one that ordered the books, she or her staff. Another reason the challenging process is not working lately is that several people have read books and reviewed them and written the challenge forms that we've been using for at least two years. And these forms were told, they were told to put them online. And I think this was kind of a stumbling block to getting public input because I think they should have been accepted and then told that the next time, they needed to put them online. All of these books contribute to what our culture is already facing, the normalizing and glamorizing of these lifestyles. Most of the electorate does not agree with this. Facts bear out severe consequences for these lifestyles. Addiction, disease, suicide, and now you hear a lot about the trans surgery and the trans treatment. We are a county of many religions, Christianity, Islam, Hinduism, Buddhism. None of the religions support these alternative lifestyles. Sorry, it's upside down on the other side. This concern was made known by the Columbia County Republican Party in March when they unanimously voted for a resolution that these books be placed out of reach, out of sight of our minor, of the minors in our community, and let them be more supervised by the guardian or adult or the parent. I would like to thank the, at least the three or four of you that have worked so closely with me over the last year. I appreciate Commissioner Mr. Skinner calling me right back, and Ms. Malir meeting me at the library to go over books, and Ms. Couch now has met with me. Thank you very much. I do have a couple questions for Commissioner Couch. We do need to know who is in charge of the hiring and firing of our library manager. I read the bylaws of the library, and they are not clear on this. Secondly, I'm requesting from Commissioner Couch that we look into two ways to check out books. Right now, all the books that we're checking out for challenging and reviewing are lumped together with books that are just checked out. And this looks like these books are really popular, and the community wants more of them ordered. So we need two separate, we need a way to check them out just to review them and possibly challenge them. In conclusion, our request is simple. It does require courage. The legal cases that Attorney Driver gave out for me to look over, there's 16 pages of approximately 40 cases. One of them was not in our favor, but all the others support a strong governing body decision on these gray area matters, based on community values, the good of society. A big one was preventing conflict and chaos. Also, unlike adults, which are protected by the Constitution, children are not protected by the Constitution. Instead, they depend on governing bodies. They depend on parents. There are situations all over our country right now experiencing these growing pains back to our faith, back to our founding fathers, back to what made this country great. And I would hope that you would act in good faith for the good of our children, to prevent harm that these, this literature can add to the many other things that are harming them in our culture now. The public library should be a safe place, especially for the many children that go there in the summertime and the homeschool children that really rely on it. That place is full of children every time I go there. Thank you for your time. Do you have questions?
Not necessarily a question, but Chris, can you address some of the legal sides, the court cases, that, where do we stand? What can we and can't we do?
Sure. So what they're requesting would be considered a content-based restriction. It's restriction based on the content of the book. This here, the homosexual nature of the books, this has been addressed by courts. There has been no case that I found that's been found in favor of being able to do this. And in fact, there's a court case that's almost exactly on point that says that you can't do that. The reason being is with First Amendment cases, if you restrict based on content itself, you're under a strict scrutiny and pretty much just lose every time if you're a government entity, if you're on a strict scrutiny.
I'm not a lawyer, but there were, all the other cases other than that one were supporting governing body judicious decisions on how to protect the community. And there was, you know, they didn't allow the gay paper, that was the main case, in the lobby of the library because the community didn't want it there. And so you're going to let these same kind of books be right where children can see them and pick them up and take them home? It's the same, you can really compare that case greatly.
That's a, that's a great example. So in that case, what they had done is they had a lobby, they allowed periodicals, magazines, and they did not allow a gay magazine. There's a lawsuit that was filed. They missed the lawsuit, changed their policy, and had it to where there would be no magazines. And if you read that court case, the court said, well, essentially, yes, they changed that policy because of this issue, but the way the rules are now, that is not content-based restriction, and that's allowable. And in fact, that county that was involved in that case said they acknowledged if they had kept the restriction just on gay magazines, lobby, that they would have lost. It would have been a First Amendment restriction that was improper. They ultimately won the case, but they won the case because they retracted their restriction on the publication.
They retracted all of the restrictions.
They said no magazines.
When I just read through those 16 pages of all those many, many cases, I see the overlying theme is that governing bodies have the choice to make decisions for the good of the community. I mean, you can pick out that one case that, yeah, it mirrors this very closely, you know, exactly. But there's all those other cases that if there's good policies and procedures in place in the government and in the government entities like the library, they're not going to mess around suing or anything because they know that you can go by that policy, and the policies are set by what the governing body believes the community needs. So you're the protector, you're our protector.
This, this gets a little bit technical, but the cases typically that are won are restrictions that are time, place, and manner, and that's just a way of saying it's not content-based. If you're, if you have a restriction that is not content-based, yes, you're more likely to win the case. But a content-based restriction like what you're asking for, there are, there are no cases that I know of that are in favor of it.
Is there another name for content? I mean, this is actually an entire lifestyle. It's almost like a religion. I mean, there might, there must be some other word beside content because LGBTQ+, AI++, plus, I mean, this is almost like a religion in our culture right now. Is there not a way, I mean, do we allow Nazi books to be on display, and then we let the children learn how to be a Nazi, or how to be a drug dealer, or any other harmful lifestyle? Do we allow that?
When it comes to just, again, homosexual literature, while it didn't deal with... while it didn't deal with what y'all are asking for, which is to separate the books, I believe, there was a case that went all the way up to the Supreme Court that talked about removing the books. And in that case, the Supreme Court of the United States said, no, you can't do that.
I agree. They should never be removed from the adult section. There should be never a ban. Adults should be allowed to read anything. And that's why we want them in the adult section or behind the circulation desk under adult authority. We're not protecting our children at this point.
The point of that, though, is that it was a con, they saw that as a.
It was adults, though. It was an adult case.
Mrs. Benz, you mentioned the hiring and firing of the library manager. Is there a specific issue with the performance of our staff?
I just, I don't think that, right now, we have a representation of the community because the resolution has not even been addressed so far. I mean, there's no concern that, like you said, 65% of the population. Well, do you think if the Democrats had won by 65%, they'd be bending over backwards to do everything we want? No. I think we won by 65%. We need to act like it.
Is your issue with staff or the library board specifically or with this?
My issue is with no one. My issue is just the fact of what we need to do.
To answer your question.
The manager is one of the nicest people I've ever met, and I'm sure that's why they vote along with her. I mean, she's a very nice lady. She's right here. Everybody likes Ms. Mayner.
To answer your question on who has hiring and firing authority, the form of government that we have allows for a county manager, who is Scott Johnson, and that gives him hiring and firing authority versus a county administrator for which the Board of Commissioners would have the hiring and firing authority. As far as your concern goes about the forms, we've emailed about this this week, but just wanted to sort of get on record here. Online form submittal changed in December of 2022. This board voted to change from hard copy forms submittal to an online form submittal. And the public was given until August 1 to turn in any hard copy forms, but at that time, August 1, 2023, at that time, we have requested that people submit those forms online. And I have offered, of course, would be very happy to help anyone who's having a hard time getting that hard copy form submitted online to.
Yeah, I appreciate you emailing me that, Ms. Couch. I just, the problem is, I picked up forms three different times, and nobody's ever told me that. And I even picked up forms a few days ago when I picked up eight more books. And they, and I said, now, how do I turn this in this time? And she said, call Ms. Mayner, and she gave me the card. I mean, so I, I have never been told to go online the three times I've checked out books to, to review and challenge. So it needs to be edu-, I don't know how you're educating the public about that back last December, but I was never told that. I learned from eight, I think it was seven or eight people that told me they were having to go back and put their information in the computer. Well, you don't encourage public input if you change. It felt like midstream. I hear you saying it wasn't midstream, but we didn't know it. The librarians weren't telling people picking up those forms.
Were you able to call Ms. Mayner and discuss that with her as the circulation desk representative asked? Was she able to answer your question on that?
Oh, I, I haven't gotten to that point. I got my bag of books, and I hadn't started on it. But yeah, I, I would go online now because I'm able to do that because I know it.
Right.
But I didn't know it until you just told me a week ago or something, yeah. Yes, ma'am? It's just people didn't know. I had no idea it was December up until August. When you emailed me on August 8, and you said the deadline was August 1, I was like, what? Okay, I know a week late about the deadline. It was a shock to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I believe we have executive session. We have three issues, and I believe it goes to you, Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to approve $21,100,000.
Second.
It's just additional, additional right-of-way acquisitions for the Hardy-McManus Road. I know we have several that we're still working on, but I don't have anything else to add. These are in line with, with the rest of the project.
Six remaining.
Six remain, thank you.
Six.
My question.
I know what you had. No six left.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Motion to approve $16,000 in sell, Almo Alvarez Parcels. Right of way.
Second.
Many remaining.
247. Good job, Mr. Kennedy.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Motion to accept the donation. Parcel of a parcel, 06. They limited libraries.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We only have one more motion to be made.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Raise your right hand. Adjourn.